Six o'clock we'll get started. If everybody would, I'll lead us in prayer. David, do you hear Lisa's pledge again?
I will.
I'll lead us in the prayer and then we'll be led by the pledge, Lisa's bidet. David, bow with me please. Father God, we just thank you for another day of life. And most of all, we just thank you for giving us an opportunity to come together and do the work for the city of Russell Springs. And we just ask you to lead guided directives through this meeting. Most of all, let your will be done and the things that we've say and do tonight, let it be pleasing unto you. And we just ask you tonight to put a hedge of protection around each one of us, each one of us family. And most of all, we ask you just to give some healing grace to our council member, Timmy, that we really need him back as soon as possible. So do a work in him and America and touch him, Father God, and we'll give you the praise and glory and all the honor that's in your name we pray. Amen.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We call the Russell Springs October 12th Record City Meeting to order. Chris, we need a roll call please.
Ms. Daniel?
Here.
Ms. Mann?
Here.
Mr. Barnes?
Here.
Mr. Hudson?
Mr. Blakey?
Here.
Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Mayor, you got a form?
Alrighty, the next thing is acceptance of the minutes. And Chris has sent them out to you. I hope you've had a chance to look over them. Do we have any of the Lisa's or traction to the minutes? Not, I need a motion to pass the minutes.
I'm going to think we accept the minutes.
So you can... You got a motion by Ms. Daniel?
Taking it.
Second by Cody. All in favor, say aye. On the, the next thing is acceptance of cash disbursements and financial statements. It's just to pay the bills. You've got that too. Has anybody got any question at all on any of the bills? Not, I need a motion to pay the bills.
Motion to pay the bills.
Got a motion, Cody, need a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lisa. Chris, we need a roll call on that one.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Blakey?
Yes.
Ms. Mann?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Alrighty, the next thing's old business. Does any of the council members have anything on the old business whatsoever? If not, we'll move into new business. The first thing is the acceptance of the zoning change on 402 High Street from an R1 to an R4. That is over here on High Street. I need a motion to have a zone change from R1 to R4. Tommy, do you want to explain a little bit on that?
I can, Mayor. Okay. So, I asked the zoning and planning commission to do this zone change to the fact that Mayor asked me when I started working up here to help us clean up Arizona map and digitize it to get it online and bring it up into the future. So that's what we're trying to do. So this was purely on me just to bring it into compliance. It's never been zoned anything other than R1, so to allow it to go to R4, to allow the duplexes and the quadplexes being built there now, that's all that needs to be done. So they unanimously voted to accept that change, and now we're just asking you guys to ratify it for us.
Anybody got any questions for Tommy?
Is this normal, that every time they act on something that we have to ratify?
Yes. Yeah, that's the way it is in KRS. The zoning planning commission has to...
Make a recommendation?
Make a recommendation. And then, once they do, you guys have to say yes or no. You can say no if you don't want it, but that's the normal way of doing it.
Anybody else got any questions for him?
I make a motion to change that to R1 to R4.
Got a motion for Rick? Need a second?
Second.
Got a second by Cody. Chris, we need a roll call please.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Blakey?
Yes.
Ms. Daniel?
Yes.
Ms. Mann?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you, Council. Thank you, Chris. So Tommy, can you handle that? The next thing is proposed zoning change for 2043 Steve Warner Drive from an R1 to an R3. Tommy, do you want to just follow up on it too?
Sure, glad to. Okay, so earlier this summer, the owner of 2043 Steve Warner Drive located inside the corporate boundaries of the city of Russell Springs has requested a zone change from R1 residential to R3 residential for the purpose of building triplex apartment units. The request meets the requirements for the R3 zoning regulations, but has to have a conditional use permit before the building can commence to make sure that it will be suitable building for the area. The zoning and planning board could not make the decision on this request, and according to KLC, Kentucky League of Cities, Megan Griffith, she's council upper, said that KRS 100.211 dictates that if the planning commission fails to make a recommendation upon a proposal within 60 days of its receipt of the administratively complete proposed amendment at the time and has not been waived by the originator, the application shall be forwarded to the next legislative body without a recommendation of approval or disapproval. So unfortunately, it now falls to you all to vote on this zoning change. That's it.
Anybody got any questions for Tommy? No question?
I have a question. What, do the residents that the property joins, I think maybe some of them are here, should they be given the opportunity to voice their opinions or?
Yes, they...
I'm not sure how this works.
They vote, they voice their opinions at the meeting. They're allowed to do that. It's a public meeting. So, I mean, the zoning and planning commission did hear them the first time, so...
And they chose not to act on?
Exactly.
Okay.
So they didn't say anything about that in KRS, but I would assume that they should be allowed to, you know, express their...
Objections or approval or what?
Exactly.
Okay.
I mean...
Well, we gotta give the owner of the properties here too, so it would be...
I think that would be appropriate.
I think I should give him time too to talk. So if anybody wants, they could have two minutes apiece to talk about it. So the floor's open if y'all want to speak about it.
I'm just trying to build apartments, the lack of housing. We have no apartments down that way, and I was just trying to operate that part of town. They're sort of against it, so I'm gonna do a nice, and they're gonna be...
Well, I'm the one that, it's right next to me, and I've lived there for a long time, and it's a good community to live in. And I hate it, that I, I don't approve of it because it's right next to me, and I don't know how he's gonna build them, but I think he's gonna build them right to the side of my driveway. And I'm so afraid that if someone, a lot of people gets in there, and we won't have the privacy, or we can't, you know, we'll have to lock our garage door. I don't lock my garage door, I don't lock, I do a lot of things. And it will be so different. And I live alone, and, I mean, I have nothing against him, I have nothing against what he's trying to do, but I just, I just don't think it's the right thing. Now, some time ago, I don't know, you all tell me if I'm wrong, but I wanted to, I have land in backup me, and I wanted to put a trailer back there to rent out, to supplement my income. And I don't know this, you guys will have to tell me whether I'm right or wrong, but I was told that I couldn't build, put a trailer back there because it was a residential place, and I couldn't put a trailer back there. And my way of thinking, just because you own something, doesn't mean you can do just whatever you want to, you know, whatever. And so I didn't, like I said, I didn't pursue that. But they said that there were some trailers allowed in there. What's the difference in trailers and what he's, the apartments he's building? So, you know, that's what I have to say.
Would you be, if they put up a privacy fence there, would that serve your purpose for you?
If he builds there, I would definitely want...
I mean, if, you know, put up a nice...
Some kind of fence for the privacy.
Fence, yeah.
But it's right in, right next to my driveway.
So that would be okay with you? If he did that, that would be okay?
Well, I still wouldn't like it, but...
Wouldn't you like it a little better, though?
And I, like I said, I have nothing against him, and I would try my best to, and he said he would work with us, you know, and everything. And I know he's been, you know, he's had a lot of, lot of problems, I have nothing against him. I just, I just don't want it that close to me, plain and simple.
Now, Tommy, correct me if I'm wrong, we're gonna change it from an R1 to an R3.
Correct.
And then it'll go down, and they will, the adjustment will tell whether he can build one, two, or three, correct?
Correct.
So all you're doing here, the council is, is just voting to change it, just because it might not be right next to her house if that's decided to do a duplex instead of a triplex.
Well, if it's built some way besides right, right against my house, I don't have a problem with it.
Can I address that?
Yeah, I want to too, that's what I'm saying.
The minimum yard requirements for an R3 development is 30 feet from the front yard, 25 feet from the backyard, and eight feet from the side yard. Now, it also stipulates in here that if it's located adjacent to a single-family residential structure, which is your house, that the minimum side yard of the side adjacent to the single-family structure has to be enlarged to 20 feet, okay? So wherever the property line is, okay, if it's the telephone pole where the pin is, from that point out is where he can put the first duplex or triplex at 20 feet from that line. And it also states in here that he must provide a six-foot-high vinyl fence to be in place extending from the front setback line to the back of the lot. That's to ensure your privacy and keep anybody from walking around and all that. So that has to be done, okay? So the Board of Adjustments has to issue this, he has to comply with this, or we can issue a stop work order, we can take him to court, we can, you know, it's all the stuff. This is put in place to protect you and everybody else.
Is the fence gonna go up in front? I mean, I'm not, I'm not adjacent to the property, but the way I figure, what he's gonna charge for rent, okay, there's gonna be people, strangers, we don't know, moving in and out, in and out. We don't know who is moving into our community. Right now, it's extremely safe. And I'm like her, you know, I'm kindly by myself, so, and I've been there a lot longer than she has, all my life, but it just kind of, should I not care or should I worry? You know, that's the question.
But to ensure that on the fence on the front, I'm gonna say probably no, it's not in our ordinances, but it cannot impede the view of traffic coming and going. And with the 35-foot setback from the right of way, you know, a fence could possibly do that, so we probably not gonna say it.
Well, let me ask you another question. This is just off the wall. Okay, since there are several of us that live by ourselves down in that area, would the city can't be patrolling that? I mean, I know that they come down 80 and go down the Old Gentry Mill Road and stuff, but, you know, that's, that's what scares me, all the strange people moving in and out. Some of them won't be able to pay that high rent every month.
And like I said, after I found, I saw what he was doing with the driveway, and the apartment was gonna be on this side, right next to my house. If, if something could be done that they could be rearranged or something like that to where they wouldn't be right there in my face, you know, and I know, I mean, you have to kind of go with these things, but if they just, if he could rearrange them on my side some way where they can, now, there's a fence on the other side that they have a fence, but if he could rearrange them just some way that they wouldn't, I don't mind the apartments being there, it's just the way they're, the way they're arranged, you know?
Mrs. Pierce, when they put up the privacy fence, I will say that you won't even realize people are there, because, you know, I, it borders right, right next to me, and I got my property off and stuff, but when Cody said, I said, "Come on, can we, my wife asked if we could put in the privacy fence." He goes, "No, I have to." You know, I'm not speaking for them, I understand their concerns, but it's like 9:00 a.m., because when I lived in Oklahoma, I only had a little quarter naked with the privacy fence, pool, everything. I could've walked out of there bare naked, nobody knew the difference any time of the day. So you have a lot more privacy than you realize with the privacy fence. That's what I had the biggest concern over, and the runoff, you know, that was something that Cody talked about, because I don't want all of his water running off all the, you know, right down in my yard. But I will agree with one thing, with privacy fence, you really don't really notice what's on the other side, that I will say.
You don't have, you don't have a white fence.
Yeah, well, yeah, that's true, but you don't, you're not even gonna notice nothing over there, really, I will say that much.
So you, you live behind it?
I live straight south of it. Yeah, it's right next to it.
Well, let me ask you all the same thing. How would you all like to have an apartment building right across from your house that you've lived all your life? And I enjoy sitting down on my front porch and, you know, walking my property over. How would you all like it?
You on a track, Tommy?
No, 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 I'm good.
I mean, think about it, you've been there all your life.
You got some living here.
Tommy, you got some right beside you.
Yeah, I do have a parking truck right next door to me. Run over it, run it away.
You put up a privacy fence, and we're gonna talk about that.
Is this fence, it's a three-way fence, back and sides both, or?
Yes.
So it's basically all the way around, Cody?
Yeah, it's gonna start all the way.
That'd be her, and you won't have a fence. I see your concern, because everybody's gonna be able to look right out at her, so maybe if they can bring it in, you know, little, you know, some come around and bring it in, you know, having me halfway there, so they aren't just sitting out there staring at her house all the time. And I understand what she's, she's thinking, she wants her privacy, but I mean, if adding another 20, 30 feet of fence keeps her happy and everybody happy, maybe my old buddy here can get his checkbook out.
I just have a question. Devil's advocate or whatever. When you bought the property, did you know how it was owned? When you bought that property, how was it owned?
I bought it, I went to Tommy, and he said, "Y'all was thinking about, y'all was gonna rezon the whole left side of 80," he was telling me. Well, when you first came to me, I said, "It's zoned R1." Yeah. "It's residential only." But I said, "The zoning planning committee was talking about rezoning it commercial." So we go ahead? Down through there. Yeah. And I said, "Well, you can't do commercial down there because that wouldn't allow him to do that." Well, then that kind of fell apart from the planning committee, so... So we stopped. We stopped, and he come up in first August and done it on his own. I just see it from a different aspect. I get people every day moving in here, getting good jobs, they're gonna where live, they can afford a house payment.
Good jobs in Russell County? Are you kidding?
Well, I mean, you're leading the city council, so you... No comment.
Ask the council, got any more questions?
I do. Mr. Coffey, are you gonna have restrictions at the residence as to the types of people that you would be renting these units to?
Yeah, that's why I was pushing my rent up, and then who? Said I was being judged mental the last meeting for raising my rent to get hopefully a higher class of rentals, but yeah, I'm gonna, they're gonna be nice.
Like background checks, that sort of thing?
Yeah. These two are, yeah, I mean, we have to run their life history now, but...
Anybody else got any more questions?
I have one more. Tommy?
That's bad.
This one's directed at you.
Okay.
Should it get rezoned, would Ms. Pierce be allowed then to put in a rental on the lot behind her home?
Unless she wants to rezone it, she has to do that for her property. This is just for that one piece of property.
Just for that one piece of property?
Yeah.
Okay.
But let me elaborate on that. If she wants to put a trailer, it's gotta be a double wide with a foundation.
Right, right.
See, that's what I mean. It's all, I'm sorry to interrupt, but it, it's, I know you have to abide by the law, I do, but it, just owning somebody, some property does not, you know, you still have restrictions, there's still laws you have to abide by. Well, if I can't, I, it has to be so-so, a double wide, all that and everything, and then, and then he can do whatever he wants to.
Well, I can't, he's, he gave me a list of stuff, I can't just do whatever I want.
So...
Yeah, that's, that's true, Ms. Pierce. You, okay, that's, that's two different animals here. We're talking about zoning your property, changing it to allow for a double wide trailer, then it has to adhere to our rules and regulations, so it has to be for the 28...
Same as his.
Same as his, yeah. He's not just gonna be able to allow the go over and just build whatever he wants. It has to go to the next step if they approve this. And if his duplexes, triplexes, I'm sorry, doesn't fit the size requirements, then they have to be backed down to where they meet the requirements of their R3 zoning. That's where I come in. I have to go down there and check it and make sure that everything follows that, because that's my job, that's what I do. So I have to, and he understands this, it has to be done according to the law.
That's what I mean. I understand that, but it just doesn't seem fair in some ways. But that's the law, so I know y'all have to abide by it, you know?
Any more questions?
Well, if you have to have the apartments down there, it'd be nice if you put a sidewalk in.
Yeah, it would.
Any more questions?
We could get our exercise.
We could get our exercise. What a handy place down there to walk.
If no more message, no more questions to be asked or anything, we need a motion to change this from R1 to R3. Need a motion. If we move on, the tale's like a motion, so... Next thing will be the first reading of ordinance 2023-08, an ordinance to adopt city council training incentives. It's just a, I'll get that, Chris, we'll have, we're just gonna go ahead with this, and this is not a vote tonight, it's a first reading.
Can I do the resolution? Sell surplus items first? Oh, alright, let me do this one. This is the first reading of ordinance 2023-08. This is just a summary. This is something that Kentucky House Bill 119 that passed quite a while ago, and it was to give incentives for city council, elected officials, a incentive to go to trainings and to try to get everyone to go and get more training on it. And that was just the first read, and it was through the Kentucky League of Cities. And right now, in current form, it's eligible for four training units per year. And that's just the first read, and I'll have a little bit more, and I'll give it to you to read, obviously, if you've got any comments or suggestions, any additions, subtractions before our next meeting in November. So that's the first read.
Did you email it to us, or?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, that's enough, I haven't...
It's in your email.
Now, the next thing is the Resolution 2023-13 to sell surplus property.
Okay. Resolution number 2023-13, resolution to authorize surplus city items on govdeals.com. Whereas the city of Russell Springs, city council acknowledges the need to manage city assets efficiently and responsibly, and whereas city of Russell Springs possesses certain surplus items, they are no longer required for the city operations. It says, "Whereas Mayor A. Thompson identified govdeals.com as a symbol platform for the sale of these surplus items, providing a transparent and competitive marketplace for the disposition of the city assets. And whereas the city council acknowledges the importance of obtaining fair market value for surplus assets, which can there be reinvested in the city for the betterment of the residents, now therefore be resolved by the city of Russell Springs City Council that, in number one, city council hereby grants authorization to the city clerk, Christopher Ramsey, to list the following surplus items on govdeals.com for the purposes of selling into the highest bidder. A 2014 Chevrolet truck, a 20, 2001 Chevrolet truck, a 2014 Dodge Charger, there's two of those, a 1984 fire truck, a 1980 GMC fire truck, a 2000 freight liner truck, John Deere Gator, it's a four-by-two, a scag lawn mower, an off-brand rotary cutter or bushhaw, Tiger mower, Claire mower, fire truck utility bed, Troy, Bill Bronco garden tractor with a, says Harrow, or Harrow, high-pressure air compressor, two high-pressure air cylinders, an Atlas high-volume air compressor, Meyer snow plow, general generator, and a USMC generator. Number two, the city clerk, Christopher Ramsey, hereby authorized to list them on govdeals.com, including setting reserve prices and establishing terms and conditions of sale in accordance with the city policies. Number three, the mayor, A. Thompson, hereby authorized to sign all necessary documents and contracts related to the sale of these surplus items on govdeals.com. Number four, the funds generated for the sale of these surplus items shall be deposited into the appropriate city account for future use in accordance with city financial policies. Passed and adopted by the city of Russell Springs City Council on this 12th day of October 2023, signed by Mayor A. Thompson, tested Christopher Ramsey, and city clerk."
Anybody got any questions?
Are we gonna do that over the internet, or?
Yes. It'll be on there for, if you pass it tonight, I believe the auction will start next Tuesday or Wednesday, and then we go for, I think it's a two-week period. Everything is parked out back, if everybody wants to look at it, and then, of course, they bid online and it goes to the highest bidder. I really don't know where they're gonna be, be at to be anywhere in the United States. And they do, the, whoever bids and wins the, the item has to pay the premium on that, so we're out, no money. They know that upfront.
And there's no, I don't know much about auction, but it's like there's no reserve. Let's say I wanted that 2014 truck, if I bid a dollar and I was the high bidder, I'd get it? Or is there some kind of, something set in place of these are...
We, we have a right to reject any and all.
Okay.
Because there's, sometimes someone might bid and we find out they really can't pay the $500 or whatever, but we do, we'll advertise it in the paper, and it will be on social media with pictures, so everyone can look at items, or they can come up here if they're looking.
Any more discussion? Not, I need a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Lisa, need a second.
Lisa, it was...
Lisa, it was me, I'll second. You could say Lisa made it, and I said you did, don't you?
Need a roll call vote please.
Ms. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Blakey?
Yes.
Ms. Mann?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, the next thing is the first reading of ordinance 2023-09, an ordinance to adopt pay structure for the city boards, city cemetery board, code enforcement board, zoning and planning board, and board of adjustments.
This is first reading, city of Russell Springs, Kentucky, ordinance number 2023-09, and ordinance established to pay for city board... An ordinance established to pay for city boards. Whereas the city of Russell Springs recognizes the valuable contributions of dedicated members serving on various city boards, including but not limited to the zoning board, but a board of adjustments, cemetery board, and code enforcement board. And whereas the city desires to fairly compensate the board members for their time and efforts in serving the community, now therefore it be ordained by the city council of the city of Russell Springs as follows. Section one, compensation, one point one. Effective from the date of the enactment of the ordinance, all city board shall, uh, provide compensation to their members on a quarterly basis as specified below. On the zoning board, the chairman of the board will be four hundred and fifty dollars per quarter. Uh, regular board members will be two hundred and sixty dollars per quarter. Board of adjustment members, board members will receive a hundred and fifty dollars per quarter. Cemetery board, board members will receive a hundred and fifty per quarter. The code enforcement board members will, will receive a hundred and fifty per quarter. Section two is the pay schedule. Uh, payments to board members shall be made on a quarterly basis with payments issued no later than the fifteenth day of the month following the end of the, of each quarter. The quarters for payment purposes shall be defined as follows. The first quarter will be from January first to March thirty-first. Second quarter will be April first to June thirtieth. Third quarter will be July first to September thirtieth. Fourth quarter will be October first to December thirty-first. Effective date, section three point one, the order shall take effect immediately upon passage and approval. Section four, servability, if any provision of the ordinance or application to any person or circumstances is held invalid, the remainder of the ordinance or the application of the provisions to other persons or circumstances shall not be affected. Section five, repeal or conflicting ordinances. All ordinances or part of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section six, publication and posting. Uh, section six point one, the city clerk is hereby directed, uh, to put a notice to passage of this ordinance to be published in a newspaper, of general circulation within the city of Russell Springs and post a copy of this ordinance at, at city hall for public inspection. Passed and approved by the council of the city of Russell Springs this blank day of, uh, twenty twenty, October of twenty twenty-three. Signed, Andy Thompson, test, Christopher Ramsey, city clerk. And that is the first reading of that one. We'll have it, uh, at the next meeting in November.
That is your first reading on the ordinance, uh, twenty twenty-three oh nine. So the next thing is the first reading of-